Good evening. Let me call the Richland County Council Special Call Meeting for September the 14th to order. First item on our agenda is our roll call. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for attendance.
Malinowski.
Here.
Pugh.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Tarasio. Joe Walker.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Overture Walker.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
President.
Newton. We have a call.
It's not on our agenda, but will be the next item is our invocation and pledge, and that's going to be done by the Honorable Baron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you will, please bow your head with me. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day. We thank you that it's been a great day. It's been a beautiful day. We thank you that you've protected us all during this day. Now we invite you into this meeting, and God, we just ask you to use us for the better of Richland County. I thank you, Lord God, that we think at another level, therefore we operate at another level. Continue to keep us safe. Continue to heal those people who are ailing, whether it's with COVID-19 or any other disease. Keep us safe in Jesus' name. Amen. If you'll stand with me for the pledge, please.
The flag of the United States of America is the symbol of our wisdom, our mission, our God, indivisible, with the liberty of God as our own.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baron. That brings us to our second item on our agenda, that is approval of minutes. Item 2A, Special Call Meeting, August 31st. Is there an motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
It's moving proper second for approval. Any discussion, changes, deletions regarding the August 31st minutes. There'll be none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for the motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tarasio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is item 2B, Special Call Meeting for September 1st minutes. The chair and her motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's moving proper second, any discussion, changes, deletions. There'll be none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for the motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tarasio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
That brings us to item 3 on your agenda, that is adoption of the agenda, the chair and her motion for adoption of the agenda.
I'm over, Mr. Chair.
It's removed.
Second.
Proper second. Mr. Brown, are there any change deletions from staff?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
I recognize.
Would we need to make sure that we include the modifications that we made earlier to include the pledge and the invocation?
Yes, we'll do it as amended, yeah. Thank you. You know, if not, can the clerk call the roll for the motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tarasio.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion passes.
That brings us to item 4 on your agenda, that's presentation. We have listed there Capital City, Lake Murray Country. Ms. Only.
Yes, sir.
That was Ms. Mary Matria.
Yes, Mary Matria with Capital City, Lake Murray Country. I reside at 3427 Kennelley Road in Erno, South Carolina. Well, our regional tourism organization is dropping my today to present to you our annual report, which should be in front of you, and to provide you with some real updates on our regional tourism organization and how we are marketing the four county region, not just Lake Murray. We celebrated 40 years this year within our tourism organization. We're one of the state's 11 regional tourism district offices, and we are mandated to promote Richland, Lexington, Newberry, and Saluda Counties, which is a very large geographic region, to promote for outdoor recreation and for vacationing families. We just received our Airbnb and VRBO report, and something very interesting came up in this report this year. In the last six months in this four county region, Richland County had 63% of the bookings within our four counties for vacationing families, of the four counties of Richland, Lexington, Newberry, and Saluda. In the last four months of our fiscal year, we had five national fishing tournaments. All of these national events aired on television nationally with a tourism ad to invite visitors to come here for more vacationing fun. We have just returned from ICAST, which is the largest outdoor and fishing show in the United States. We have returned with four large pieces of business for '22, '23, and one even into '24. During the pandemic, our organization stood tall. We dedicated 55% of our budget to marketing and advertising, and the results are in, this region's stories for tourism are being told through our media press partners. We provided data, attraction information, et cetera, and had 162 articles published on this region's attraction and tourism. 38% of those were about fishing. The remainder were about our great outdoors and recreational fun. It was confirmed that of those articles, we received 168, excuse me, yeah, 168 billion media impressions and a tremendous marketing dollar value. It is reflected in the annual report you have. We filmed a show by Eric the Travel Guy, Beyond Your Backyard, which features Congaree National Park. This show is airing nationally on PBS September 19th. That's coming up shortly. Also, we just completed filming the story of the Revolutionary War trail through South Carolina that is promoting each of the 11 districts and the Rev War story within those tourism districts. This will air early in the year of 2022, again on PBS. Hot off the press, Food and Travel Magazine has named our region a top southern summer destination. That included a wonderful spread and a six-page story on all of our major restaurants in our four counties, something the restaurants needed right now. Forbes Magazine also followed suit in naming this region a top southern destination. So, our point tonight is when you're thinking of our organization, Capital City, Lake Murray Country, again, think more than we're just about a lake. We are working 365 days a year. We're not a weekend festival. We're not an event, but 365 days a year posting social media, promoting tourism events in the four counties and on our calendar of events, which by the way, has a very high Google ratings. We place media ads, and yes, we get national and world exposure through national and world events. Very shortly, we'll be bringing the World Food Championship to this region. That's our job. We need continued support from Richland County. We're very grateful for all the support we get. We just want all of you to know, we take our job serious, we take our job with lots of fun, but we get the job done. We have an impact on Richland County's tourism, and we are-
A great return on investment. We dedicate the dollars to generate tourism revenue. Thank you.
Everybody, we certainly appreciate what you do for our community in our county, and we'll continue to do what we do to support you to continue to do what you do. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman.
Next item on our agenda is item 5, which is a report of the Akron County Attorney for Executive Session. Ms. McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's only one item, it's listed as 5A, it's also listed as an action item in your agenda on 15F, other items. This is an emergency ordinance requiring the wearing of face masks to help alleviate the threat of COVID-19, specifically the recent surge in the Delta variant. That's appropriate for executive session under 30-4-78, too, for legal advice if you think you need legal advice. You can also have that one in open session if you're just gonna be talking about the prison and custody. So, that's completely up to you guys, and there will be no outside counsel tonight. That completes my report.
If there's no outside counsel, the chair, we recommend that we just pick that up and it's placed on our agenda at item 15F. That brings us to item 6, that is 6A, citizen input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Ms. McBride, did you have that list of persons who signed up to speak?
No one signed up, Mr. Chair, for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing.
And the second citizen input, item 7A, must pertain to Richland County matter, not on the agenda, items for which a public hearing is required. Anyone who signed up for the second public hearing?
Yes, sir. Citizen's input must pertain to Richland County matters, not on the agenda, items of which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled cannot be addressed at this time. So, we have five persons that have signed up.
For the record, Ms. McBride, we'll call your name, you may come down once you hear your name, and you have two minutes to speak to the item that you wish to speak to.
Please refrain from calling personal names in your presentation. The first person is Dr. Sheri Jaco, or Jaco.
Good evening, council members. I'm Sheri Jaco. I'm representing Olympia Mill Village here tonight. I'm sure some of you are familiar. I have been sending letters and emails to you regarding the concerns we have in the Mill Village. We are in a crisis situation, and I'm here to share with you some of the events that are taking place that I am not sure of which you might be aware. The first thing we're concerned about is high-density development in the Mill Village. What is in recent trends, developers have been taking single-family dwellings and adding bedrooms. In one instance, they cleared off a lot that was 60 by 120, and they built an eight-bedroom single-family dwelling with one entrance, with no provisions for off-street parking on an already crowded street and no green space. This is what's happening with this trend in developing here in the Mill Village. Another thing we're concerned about is the current zoning review. We want to be sure that included is some green space and a requirement for on-street, excuse me, onsite parking if it's above two bedrooms, any new development. We're just asking you to take that into consideration. The third thing that concerns us is code enforcement. Every week, there are large parties down in the Mill Village of 200-plus young people. We've got underage drinking, we've got loud and sometimes offensive music, we've got cars blocking safe travel through those streets with all of these young people, because everybody drives cars, of course. Even last fall, I'm sure you're aware of, there was an instance of a young man in the middle of the night wandering around trying to get back home, and he fell into the Vulcan quarries to his death. This past weekend, we had young people jumping off of a deck over the fence into Vulcan property, and when the sheriff's deputies were called, we were told that we can't, they're not breaking a specific law.
Ms. Jaco, I have to ask you to kind of wrap it up for me since your two minutes have expired.
Okay, all right. These are the things we're concerned with. We are in a crisis situation. We know these things are before county council right now, and we're asking you to please be mindful of the historic and residential nature. We're not against development, but we also want to preserve the history that is there.
Thank you very much.
We need your help.
Thank you, and we did receive your letter.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Here. The next person is Vi Henley. Please remember that you only have two minutes, and you have to restate your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. Chairman Livingston, members of council. My name is Vi Henley. I reside currently in the Olympia Mill Village at 104 Alabama Street. Thank you for your service and to the people of Richland County. As Richland County considers the revision of land use code and ordinance, we ask a robust residential rental ordinance be written addressing the unique needs of unincorporated urban rental neighborhoods. Implementation of such an ordinance could require every unit within the county to have a residential rental permit to allow occupancy and include with significant penalties if the properties become unsafe or a public nuisance. The county's codes and ordinances will have to address the needs of urban neighborhoods. Areas to consider are overgrown lots, roll carts, storage, outdoor placement of interior furniture, safe housing, including maximum occupancy rate. safe housing, including maximum occupancy rates, broken windows, rotten porches, peeling, paint and siding, maintenance of ride-ways and removal of refuse and white and brown goods. The rental ordinance must also have adequate enforcement to maintain acceptable standards of living. As a result, the county will need a separate department to include law and urban code enforcement to address those needs. The sheriff's Region One budget must also be increased for the Olympia area. Bringing urban safety and crime concerns to Region One are the roughly 2,500 young people who call the Olympia Village home nine months out of the year. The FBI recommends police coverage from 1.8 to 2.6 officers per every thousand residents to provide for the influx and the roughly 400 year-round residents. The sheriff's department will need to assign an additional 4.8 deputies to adequately provide for those services and protections. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next person is Mr. David Oberly. Please restate your name and provide your address.
Hello, council. My name is David Oberly. I live on 2434 Paxton Street. We've all heard this saying, at least the last 20 years or so, it's been pretty common, taxation is death. I can't think of a better example than this. I was in this building 20 years ago. The only person spoke out against this illegal tax. I gave two reasons for it. One has been supported by the state Supreme Court. The first one, though, is it's regressive. This tax you all impose on every vehicle is $20, no matter what the vehicle is. A single parent with three or four children that has a broken-down car, they pay $20. If you have a Lamborghini, you pay $20. Most recently, my last car was an old beater. Half of my tax bill was this tax. The other reason, which is the big thing, is you cannot tax a certain part of the population for something we all have used of. The Supreme Court has just ruled that favor regarding Greenville County. I ask you all immediately, return all the money you've taken from us for the last 20 years, immediately. Thank you very much.
Next person is Mr. Mustafa. Please restate your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abdullah Mustafa. Address 2101, Ryden Ridge Row. I want to first and foremost thank the Honorable Madam Naski and Honorable Gretchen Barron for replying back to my last email. I was here at the last council meeting in regards to what former council member Gwynn have seek in regards to the peace concert. I'm here again today to say that we hope that the county council would do what the former council member seek to do. And this is for Richland County, not for San Cofer, but for Richland County. We have been blamed by your administrator that we dropped the ball. And again, I continue to say that San Cofer did not drop the ball. My last information that I got from your county administrator is that the county council did not do their job. Okay? That's because the fact that the clerk of the county council should have gave you guys the information. I never even received a reward level. So all we're saying, very simply, this is for the county. Okay? The county deserves a freedom, peace, unity concert to bring things back to the center. So all we're asking is that you represent your constituents. Thank you very much.
Next person is Mr. Alan Hutto. Please restate your name and provide your address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Alan Hutto and I live at 100 Drifters Court. I'm the new chief executive officer of the Building Industry Association of Central South Carolina and I'm just here to introduce myself. I've had the pleasure of meeting a few of you and look forward to working with y'all and getting to know you. Of course, we'll be involved in the land development code. But again, I'm just very happy to be here. I come from South Carolina DOT, so I'm coming from the agency side. So I understand some of the struggles that y'all are going through and hopefully we'll be here to help. And again, look forward to getting to know you and meeting you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Mr. Kenneth Spire. Please restate your name and provide your address.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having allowed me to speak. Reverend Kenneth Spire, 154 Forest View Circle, Columbia, South Carolina, 29212. Coming on behalf of the Sarah Matthews community, representing the chairperson of that community, Mr. Duval, who wanted to be here, but his wife is ill. And he stated that, I want to thank you for the feedback that I got September 2nd, 2021 from project manager, Mr. Jeff McNeese. Mr. Duval wanted to be here, but his wife is ill. He stated that there had been preparations made for the widening of Wages Road and he was informed that there were some financial concerns of the penny tax that caused the project to stop, apparently, six years ago. What he stated that about this letter, he said there are two property owners that refused to provide easement for the county. That was some over 10 years ago. That wasn't recently because they did get started, but they stopped. And he wanted to come and address this issue and hopefully the pavement of this road will start back. But there were some issues concerning the penny tax at that time and that was apparently six years ago when they stopped. But they did get started, but they stopped. So I think the information that Mr. Nezzy provided, he was saying was pretty old. And the second thing, if I had time, I would like to still like to talk to someone on the county council concerning the youth job program supported by the Richland County Council. And I'm in agreement with Mr. Mustafa. I think a peace concert, unity concert would help Richland County. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chair, that completes the list. No one else to sign up?
Thank you very much. Let's citizen input is closed now. I'll bring us to item eight on the agenda. And that is a report of the county administrator. Ms. Brown, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. In your packet, you have some information that I have provided to you related to my report and I won't go over all of it in detail, but I will cover the items that's listed. I did want to remind the council members who were not able to participate in the coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting of the numbers that we're showing here in Richland County. One of the things I talked about on yesterday afternoon was that before, when the county last instituted a mask ordinance, the question was asked kind of what the numbers were and compared to what they are now. And the level of incidence, while it was high, it was not near as high as it is now. Our current report period rating is 1,014 confirmed cases of COVID per 100,000 tests. Again, that puts us in a high tier substantially compared to where we were the last time we dealt with the discussion of a mask ordinance. The percent positive rate is still above 5%. The last reporting period, we were showing at 8.8%. And I also included the vaccination numbers. I know council members were asking about the level of vaccination in our county and you have that there in the packet that shows you Richland County as compared to the state of South Carolina for eligible residents. You also have in your packet items listing the Emergency Rental Assistance Program statistics. Just want to again, just briefly talk about the fact that the county did receive $12 million related to ERA I. The county did allocate that funding out and was received an additional allotment of funding in ERA II. The county also had allocated roughly about $2 million of that. The US Treasury allowed the county to submit a request for the additional 60% of that funding and we were awarded an additional $5.9 million to make our total second allotment over $9 million. So again, those are positive things related to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that reflects what the county has done in that area. And those are the two items that I want to update you on related to the coronavirus. So before I move on to project updates, what questions do you have related to the coronavirus update? Okay?
Chair, actually I have a question. Mr. Brown, just so I understand you, is it in your report that the current numbers for COVID cases, or the percentage, rather, is it higher now than what it was when we initially voted for a mask mandate back in, I guess that was in 2020 sometime, before my tenure on council?
Yes, sir. It was in 2020 and I went back and I looked and early at that time, I was trying to see what the reports specifically were. And just to take you back for a few moments, at that time, there was actually conversations throughout the community as to what metrics you were supposed to use and there wasn't actually, it wasn't settled what agencies should do. And I thought that was interesting as I went back and kind of looked at that. But going until you're looking at your September numbers, so council recess is in August, then looking at your September numbers, yes, if you look at those numbers, we are substantially higher in our case count per 100,000 and per our cases compared to then. So yes, sir. Even back as of July of this year, I reported out that at our last council meeting, those numbers were about 58 per 100,000, which put us in a moderate tier. And now we're at 1,000 per 100,000. So that's a significant difference per case count.
Previously, we were at a moderate tier. So now with the numbers being higher, what tier are we in now?
We're in the high tier.
High tier.
Yes, sir. So anything greater than 200 is high. But before, the highest we were, we were, you know, in that range. But now, literally, we're like I said, previous council meeting, we reported out 925, now reporting out over 1,000.
So Brown, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions regarding COVID's update before we move on? If not, you may proceed, Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. And again, members of council, if you have any questions, certainly I'll stop, but I don't want to get into all the details you have in your packet, but I will cover again a couple more items. Related to the redistricting process, the staff has drafted a consultant agreement that we're going to be putting out. The county, when they originally did their redistricting process previously, they use a in-house process. So we are looking to use an in-house process with a consultant, which will allow us to make sure that we are compliant. But again, the county previously, you did do this in-house using your planning, development and IT staff. We plan to do the same thing this time, but we plan on having a consultant onboard as well. So that process is in place. That's what we're doing regarding the redistricting process. All right. And then if I can, because we have some backup documentation, I'm going to come back to item number two because we have some backup documentation in the packet and I'm going to go to item number three. Item number three is the strategic planning process. We've mentioned out to the county that you please prepare to receive information from a consultant that we're hiring to walk us through that process. You should be receiving some contact via email from Baker Tilly. Want to make sure that you're responsive to those so that we can get our strategic plan rolling. We also, in conjunction with that, are going to move forward with the community survey and tie those in together. All those things, we really are going to need council assistance and council participation. So we're just asking that you're very attentive to that and we're going to get that kicked off and we're going to get our strategic plan hopefully in place before we do our retreat so that the retreat, you can use that to make decisions as how you're going to look for it in the new year. So that would be the plan relating to the strategic planning process and community survey. Item four and five are items that are really more of quick updates. The council voted for the Public Safety Complex and for DSS. The Public Safety Complex is moving forward. We talked about hiring a construction manager at risk. We talked about looking forward to receiving some bonding information that we're going to be bringing to you to put finances to that project. For the Department of Social Services, we did have a follow-up meeting on yesterday. It was a pretty good meeting. If I can just take you back just for a moment, we received a request from space from DSS. We looked at that request and we thought it needed to be more. So we went and we met with DSS and after having a discussion with them, they agreed that there was some information that seemed to be left off that they provided to us. So we're going to have them go back and look at that. Additionally, just this afternoon, I actually received a phone call from DHHS, who communicated to me that they have space in there and that unlike DSS, we have to involve some higher-ups in that process. So we're going to be making sure that they're all included because they co-join in that office space. So I just kind of want to keep that in mind related to those projects, but they are both moving forward. And then going back to item number two, this was dealing with a motion that was made several months ago. So in your packet, what I've done is I've put in specific information that relate to Richland County's employment demographics. These are our staff views. So this is what it looks like right now, our staff in terms of the breakdown, whether you're looking at gender, whether you're looking at race, whether you're looking at supervisors versus non-supervisors. So you have a breakdown in your packet of what our employment looks like. And so I believe that was one of the areas that the motion that was made asked us to look at and to consider. So I want to put that information out there and because it's backup documentation in the packet, I want to stop and see what questions you have about that. But with that being said, Mr. Chair, that will conclude my remarks other than responding to questions you may have about any of the information that I covered.
Question on the information that Mr. Brown covered, and I think you found that information between what pages, 22 and 32?
Mr. Chair? Just had a question.
You recognize it?
And Mr. Brown, just had a question about the Public Safety Complex. Have we finalized the contract yet with an architect? Or are we in discussions with an architect about this project?
The architect is the part that's already done and that's LS3P. Did I say that correctly? That's correct. LS3P is the architect. What you see on your packet information is that we're looking to hire a construction manager at risk and we've already gone through that process. This body communicated at the last conversation that I could go forward and move forward, which was in my purview. And so I'm doing that. I just wanted to make sure the council was updated so we would not be holding up any movement on these projects. Thank you.
Chair, and thank you, Mr. Administrator, for providing the background data regarding the equity study. But it is understood that this is just some information because we're going to move further with the actual study.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Thank you. And I would just like to note, this is very good information just to begin, start, to get started with. And if you would note on page 30 of 167, and the purpose of the study is to get accurate information for us to look at it, study and see what needs to be done or how can we move forward. And if you just look at the employee demographics by pay range and gender, the numbers are astounding that, and you can see for yourself, for those making less than 30,000, we have 65% that are, is that correct, that are female?
Yes, ma'am.
And 35% that are male, which is very interesting. And then if you go to page 28, if you look at the profile in terms of employees by pay range, less than 30,000, employees making less than 30,000, you have 72% that are black and 23% that are white and less than 2% that are Hispanic or other. But then you go to those making 80,000 or more and you have 61% that are white and 34% that are black and less than 5% that are others. So this is some interesting data that we will be looking at in terms of as we move forward and how to address some of the issues that are coming out of this data and other concerns that we have. So I thank you for this preliminary data.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And Mr. Chair, it's not in my report. I did send you all some information. I do not know whether or not you wanted an update in this form related to a request that you received that came through administration that we looked into. So if not, I won't say anything about it. But you do have that report that I submitted to you. But, uh, you do have that, uh, report that I submitted to you, uh, at the council in reference to that information. So I should have considered that as well. Thank you. No, sir, Mr. Chair, that's all.
That bring us to the report of the Honorable Clerk of Council?
Yes, sir. I just have one item. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have received two thank you, um, letters or cards from, um, ACA Thomas's family and from the widow of the Greenville County Chair, um, thanking us for our expression of condolences on the loss of their loved ones. That completes my report.
Excellent. It's reported to the Chair. Um, just quickly, in an attempt to come up with a framework to address some of the concerns, um, that's been expressed by council members in terms of moving forward on certain issues. Um, it is my recommendation to, uh, to move forward with establishing of some, um, ad hoc committees to address some of these concerns. Um, I would list these now, and those of you with, you just get in touch with me and let me know what you might be interested in serving on. And what I'm, I'm looking at is a, a strategic planning, um, committee to work with staff, um, that consists of about three or four council members. Um, so we can make sure we move that forward and, and, and council's involved in that. Also too, there have been several concerns expressed about looking at, um, how to reorganize, revamp, and what we can do with our clerk's office. I'll be establishing a, a, and, and ad hoc committee to deal with the clerk's office review, um, um, so if you're interested in serving on that one, let me know. Um, also too, one of the issues that we're dealing with now is the convention center. I'll ask the current, I'm going to ask the current liaison person to the convention center to serve as an ad hoc committee regarding the convention center expansion issue, so we can move that forward. Um, also, we, we have an internal audit committee, and we're also having our budget, um, uh, a position for a internal auditor, as well as an administrative person. I'm going to ask the, um, internal audit committee to work on something with that to bring back to council and serve as an ad hoc committee that reference. And then there was some concerns that relates to the, uh, OSBO office, um, in turn, in terms of looking at and, and encouraging and working with staff to try to develop some kind of strategic plan directly related to the OSBO office. I'm going to ask that ad hoc, that ad hoc committee to work on that, uh, um, that committee of liaisons and persons to work on, work as an ad hoc committee to move that forward. Uh, so if, if you already are on a, a particular liaison group, then you know what that assignment is. But if you wish to serve on one of the committees, um, that is not a, uh, currently liaison committee, for example, active strategic planning committee, um, clerk's office review and so forth, please let me know what you're interested in. I'll, um, have the clerk to send something out, reference this information, so that way, um, um, you can, um, respond accordingly. Any questions for clarification? That completes my report.
Mr. Horacio's hands up.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Horacio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Horacio, you're recognized.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just had a, I, I think you said that we know who we are if we're the liaison. Um, I hope I know who I am if I'm the liaison, uh, but can you?
We'll send that out too. When I send out some information about all the committees, I'll, I'll, I'll list the liaisons for each of those too.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
As a reminder, yeah. All right, that completes my report. That brings us to the approval of consent items, of item eleven on your agenda. And that's item eleven A, B, and C. Um, that first, um, item is, which is eleven A, twenty-one dash zero one nine MA, Robert Fuller, from R U T L I, and that's ten fifty Gates Road. Um, Chair, ten, ten motion for item eleven A.
Mr. Chair, if appropriate, I move to approve items eleven A, B, and C.
Okay. First is approved, and second for items e- eleven A, B, and C, discussion. There'll be no discussion. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll for items, uh, eleven, the consent items, eleven A, B, and C.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
That brings us to item twelve on your agenda, which is, which is our third reading items. And, and the, um, item bear is item twelve A, um, that's item, uh, that's twenty-one dash zero one zero MA. Kevin Stillman, um, from PDD to PDD, that's eight three nine three zero, Rabbit Run. Um, I, I, I was in conversation with, with Newton, um, who, who asked that that item be deferred, um, and she did inform me that she had a conflict and may not be here. She will try to be online if possible.
Can I move for deferral?
Earl, is this second?
Second.
Second.
Second for deferral for item twelve A. Um, Sean, can you call the roll for the motion for deferral for item twelve A?
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
That brings us to, um,
Mr. Chair, clarification. Maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't hear you. Is that deferred to the next meeting? I didn't hear.
Yeah, next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. That brings us to, um, item thirteen on your agenda, which is the report of the Economic Development Committee. Um, Mr. McBride, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the Economic Development Committee presents the following, thirteen A, committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of aboleran taxes agreement between Richland County and Tri-County Electric Cooperative, Cooperative, Inc., identifying the project and other matters related thereto. Additional information can be found on pages forty-one through forty-two. Um, this is an inducement resolution that legally recognizes Project Try and commits that the county intends to negotiate an incentive with the company. The committee recommends approval by council.
That committee's recommendation, discussion. Mr. Malinowski, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page forty-one, the third whereas, a very short sentence that says the project is anticipated to result in an investment of approximately eight million five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, throughout the rest of this document, it says, it, it stated, it says not less than eight million five hundred thousand. I think we just need to be consistent, and it is either not less than or approximately, and that needs to be the same throughout the document. That's all. Thank you.
There we go.
Any, any further discussion? I, um, I'll ask, um, Ms. Owen to call the roll for the, um, motion.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
Here, the next item is item thirteen B, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad- aboleran tax agreement by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Tri-County Electric Cooperative to provide for payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. This is a first reading item. Additional information is on page, um, pages forty-three through seventy-four. Um, this is a first reading for a thirty-year fee in lieu of taxes for Project Try. It's a company that is considering an investment of twelve million to construct fiber optic services in Lower Richland County, providing more competitive prices, better services, and services to previously unserved areas. This fee agreement will reduce the company's assessment ratio to six percent and fix its mileage rate for this investment. The committee recommends approval by council.
That's for me. This recommendation for item thirteen B, discussion. There'll be no discussion. I'll ask, Ms. Owen.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, just, uh, for information, since this is a first reading item, uh, due to Mr. Rubel's schedule, my schedule, my questions, I did not get asked. I'm not going to hold it up here. I'll get them, uh, from him, and so I'll just vote no on this one and D for the same reason, and that's all.
Further discussion, um, Ms. Owen can call the roll for item thirteen B.
Malinowski?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
Here, item thirteen C, committing to negotiate a fee in lieu of aboleran taxes agreement between Richland County and Project Bridge, Bridge, identifying the project and other matters related thereto. Additional information is on page seventy-five through seventy-six. This is an inducement resolution that legally recognizes Project Bridge and commits that the county intends to negotiate an incentive with the company. The committee recommends approval.
That committee's recommendation? Mr. Malinowski, you're recognized.
Same thing on this one, uh, Ms. McBride, Mr. Chair. On page seventy-five, the amount says approximately here, but not less than throughout. So just make it consistent, please.
Here's the final?
Let me vote on, take the.
Oh, sorry.
Further discussion, there'll be no, on item thirteen C, um, if not, Ms. Owen can call the roll for thirteen C.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
Here, the final item is item thirteen D, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of aboleran taxes agreement be at, by and between Richland County, South Carolina, and Project Bridge to provide for a payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and other related matters. This is a first reading item. Additional information, pages seventy-seven through one oh seven. This is the first reason that Project Bridge is an existing manufacturing, considering an investment of a hundred and thirty-one million to modernize and install safety processes at its facility in Lower Richland County. The company currently has nine hundred and forty employees, and this investment will help secure employment levels. The fee in lieu of taxes will be for thirty years at a six percent assessment ratio. The committee recommends approval.
That committee's recommendation for item thirteen D, discussion. There'll be none, um, Ms. Owen, can you call the roll for item thirteen D?
Malinowski?
No.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
Here, this completes my report.
Let me refer to one thing I forgot to mention during my report, and that is, um, we need to move forward with the land development code. And so I'll be sending out a notice trying to schedule a meeting, a work session, one day next week, so we can not get too far behind with that and meet our deadline. Excellent. Item fourteen on your agenda, that is the report of the Rules and Appointments Committee. That's Honorable Bill Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Councilwoman McBride, do we need to reconsider the resolutions? Since they're just one reading or not, so that y'all can get going with them?
We only need one. Let's do it just in case. Thank you.
Yeah. Now I move to reconsider thirteen A and C.
Second.
Again, C?
Yeah, those are the two resolutions.
Moving forward, set for reconsideration, um, Ms. Owen, can you call the roll for reconsideration of those items?
Malinowski?
No.
Pugh?
No.
McBride?
No.
Livingston?
Okay.
Horacio?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Overture Walker?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Malinowski.
Well, uh, Mr. Chair, item fourteen, the rules, reported the Rules and Appointments Committee. Fourteen A, Business Service Center Appeals Board, there are four vacancies. We had two applicants, but it was determined by the director of the Business Service Center that applicant number one was not eligible. That left applicant number two, and the committee unanimously recommended to appoint Tanika Green and re-advertise the other vacancies.
It is a recommendation to appoint, um, Tanika Green and re-advertise. Um, any discussion? If not, um, Ms. Owen can call the roll for the committee's recommendation for item fourteen A.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
Item number fourteen B, the music festival. Two vacancies. The committee recommends to appoint number two, Al Martin, and re-advertise the other vacancy.
That committee's recommendation, uh, any discussion? I should now ask Ms. Owen.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Horacio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion passes.
Item number fourteen C, Richland Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees, two vacancies. After our hospital liaison contacted the hospital personnel, they reported to us that it is recommended that the individuals that are next appointed to this board have a background in financial, banking, or legal. None of the applicants have that background. So the committee did not feel we should be sending them people that they don't need, and instead re-advertise with a re-advertising stating that those are the three areas individuals should have for a background. So the recommendation is to re-advertise and let people know that we need financial banking or legal.
That committee's recommendation, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I just wanted to, um, follow up to Mr. Malinowski's, um, report that all of the candidates that did submit applications for those positions will still continue to stay on file for a year. And if there are any other vacancies on that committee, they still can be considered at a later point.
That's your name.
Um, thank you for your input and contact in the, the, um, PRISM. My question is, uh, there are other members on the board, right?
Oh, yeah.
And so, um, if we're making special requirements for our appointees, what about the other ones? I think that, um, I don't have an issue with that, but I don't think that we should be directed as, and I know we were asking for their input. But in the future, I think we should look at who we think would be the best person, because they also have the opportunity to make appointments.
We, we have asked all of the other boards, committees, and commissions what it is that they need for appointees. And, and that is in the write-up that the, uh, clerk's office has provided us, so we look at that as well.
Now, I'm not saying that that's not a good idea, but I'm just thinking that there should be a, a, a number of, uh, of issues that they may look at, a, a number of qualifications, since there are other board appointees also. Because that limits us.
Well, it does, but it's kind of like the, the, i- if you need a CPA, you need a CPA.
Yeah, but if I also, well, we can go on and on. You know that you and I can.
Okay.
So I'm not disagreeing with the appointment. I'm just saying in the future, even with other boards, we need to consider the options that we need as well as the options of for the board.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, reference, um, the motion for item fourteen C.
Mr. Chair? Me? Mr. Horacio's hands up.
Horacio, um, go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
Thank you. First, uh, first of all, just generally, I'd like to acknowledge that I did see some of the online applications, uh, in our packet. So I'm really happy that those are, um, coming through, and we're, we're utilizing the online form, uh, for applicants. The other thing I just wanted to say about this item in particular is that The other thing I just wanted to say about this item in particular is that, um, you know, there are some incredibly, um, qualified and, and very, and people who could bring a lot to the table for this board. Um, I know we are looking for the specific, um, kind of qualification at this time, uh, but we really do kind of have, uh, almost an embarrassment of riches here before us in terms of other kinds of qualifications and if something comes up, I hope we'll, we'll turn back to that well and, uh, and appoint, uh, one of these folks. And that's it for me.
Over the motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horacio.
Sorry, yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker. Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item, turn the page here.
I'm not here, recognize?
Thank you, item number fourteen D, the River Alliance, the committee recommended to appoint D, uh, C, Scott Hicks.
Recommend for, uh, Hicks discussion. I'll ask Ms. Onkin, she called the role for the committee's recommendation for item fourteen D.
Malinowski. Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horacio.
Yes, sorry.
Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, the, uh, committee interviewed, uh, two applicants for the Lexington and Richland Alcohol and Drug Abusance Abuse Center, LARADAC, but that did not get put in this agenda. Uh, the committee does have a recommendation, if you'd like me to go forward with that. I can give you the two names, it would be fourteen E.
I, I'd rather wait until we get, add to the agenda the next time.
Hey. All right, thank you, then that completes my report.
For your concern, I'll make sure I have it on the agenda. Um, eh, that, that report is complete, that brings the item fifteen, other items, uh, fifteen A through D are hostile to district allocations, um, and then, um, E is a resolution. So, item fifteen A is what's before us.
Mr. Chair.
This man, you recognize?
I'd like to make a motion to approve items fifteen A through D. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving properly second for approval, item A through, fifteen A through D in discussion. There being none, I'll ask Ms. Onkin, call the role for the motion for item fifteen A through D.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horacio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll bring us to item fifteen E, a resolution to appoint and commission George Ricardo Carroll as a code enforcement officer for the proper security, uh, I'm in general web here, which, left in Richland County, um, turn ten to motion for item fifteen E.
I move to approve.
For approval, this second.
Second.
Moving properly second, in discussion, there being none, I'll ask.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Um, you recognize?
Uh, since I'm learning more and more about the code enforcement officers, um, I just wondered if, uh, if we could get a little more, uh, detail about how, uh, how this person is appointed, uh, to what duties?
And who, uh, who would be the person who could give us more information on regarding this code enforcement officer and duties and so forth?
I'm going to start addressing it and then, uh, hopefully I have somebody to pitch in to give you some more details but I'll tell you briefly about code enforcement and what we're talking about here. There are certain jobs that you have that Richland County, like for example, uh, in our, uh, annual services division. So, those ladies, uh, gentlemen that may do those jobs, uh, have ordinances that they have to carry out and be consistent with, with Richland County. By, uh, naming them as a code enforcement officer, that allows them to do that. But that doesn't necessarily mean that, uh, what that individual does is goes out and miss, miss, necessarily look at any, uh, code violation and focus on that. So, you have multiple individuals who you designate with this designation who are carrying out those duties, specific to that work, not necessarily that you hear code enforcement officer, do you hear that the county has people generally going out looking at all codes related to the ordinance? So, that's, that's a, an example, Mr. Horacio, of, um, while we name some of these individuals but they're specific to the job duties that they have and they're not necessarily general code enforcement officers, they are specific to the services that they are hired to do. Does that help you?
Uh, yes, and I just, you know, asked that question because I want to make sure that we, um, are, have enough code enforcement officers to do a, all of the code enforcement jobs that we need done in the county.
One of the things that, uh, you will see coming back from us is, uh, a staffing analysis and within that analysis, you will see the number of individuals in those departments and from there you'll, we'll be able to talk about whether or not, uh, there's a need for additional staff and whether or not those staffs will be mi- members who would be enforcing various, uh, codes within Richland County.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Further discussion. I've, um, call the role for item fifteen E.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horacio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, for this item fifteen F, that's an emergency ordinance requiring the wear of face masks, um, to help alleviate the spread of COVID-nineteen specifically of the recent surge in the Delta variant. Mrs., um, McLean, do you want to just kept, just, just tell us what, what it is before us and, and the ordinance that's, that's been prepared? That's kind of a summary.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, well, um, as you are aware, um, there are other municipalities and counties, um, around us dealing with the same issue, um, this ordinance, similar to the one we enacted, um, in twenty twenty, um, does the general mask mandate for commercial establishments? Um, it also has, uh, a requirement for, uh, restaurants, retail stores, salons, grocery stores, pharmacies to require their employees to wear masks. All, it has some, um, exceptions from those requirements, that is all, um, exactly as it was, um, except for a couple of parag- one paragraph, I think I highlighted paragraph one about, um, sidewalk areas, busy sidewalks, it's the exact language we enacted in twenty twenty. Um, and it also is just a civil fine, uh, the way it's written would be a, uh, civil infraction if you're caught not wearing your mask and one of the, um, areas you're required to is twenty-five dollars, um, if you are an employer who does not, um, require an employee to wear masks, it's a hundred dollar civil infraction. Um, the second part of this, uh, mask ordinance is new and it's, um, uh, based on the City of Columbia's ordinance, obviously. This is pertaining to schools and daycares, um, as you know, the South County Supreme Court just struck down the, uh, mask ordinances that are related to, um, the schools themselves enforcing, uh, the mask ordinance. So, the way this is written is an attempt to still have, uh, county, uh, be able to require masks in schools and it, it reads, uh, facilities, indoor facilities on school or daycare grounds is who would apply, what it, where it would apply. Um, it has an age requirement, it's over ten years old now, um, there would be no enforcement authority and no requirement, as a matter of fact, prohibition against the school district, teachers, uh, staff, anybody enforcing this or even calling to make a complaint. Essentially, our fire marshals would go out, say, maybe if a parent complained or, uh, just on, they will take, uh, periodic visits to schools. They will ticket individuals who don't have their masks on, period. If it's a child and they decide that the parent has, uh, let me see how this is written. Um, parents or guardians of children where the children knowingly and deliberately refuse to comply with the ordinance may be warned or cited for the civil infraction. So, it has, we're not trying to cite children. Um, so, this again is a civil infraction, um, the way ours is written is a, a twenty-five dollar fine, um, I believe the City of Columbia is, is a little higher. This is written, um, specifically to avoid the school districts, um, having to enforce or use any money, meaning any time or any, um, any provisional funds, which I think the Supreme Court decided in the, uh, Wilson versus City of Columbia case is pretty broad that anytime, um, the school district, uh, asked them to wear masks, that was expending money, so we are not asking them to do that. We are just asking, we are just requiring that all persons, adults and children under the age, over the age of ten, wear a mask inside school facilities and daycares. And I think that's, uh, kind of what we have unless you have questions.
Anthony, I'll leave the motion regarding item eighteen F.
Chair, I'd be recognized, have a.
You, you recognize, just over the.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Plank, Ms. McLean, um, I think you mentioned the, uh, the ruling, um, the most recent Supreme Court ruling and I believe that the High Court here in South Carolina said that, or pronounced rather, that, um, while a, a school requiring or asking a student to wear a mask, that is, I guess that's tantamount to expending public funds, correct?
Correct.
So, I think in the, uh, ordinance, the proposed ordinance that's before us, I think there's language in there that says the county will provide masks, uh, to, I guess to the schools upon request. Would a request from the school for masks from the county, would that also be, uh, a violation of the proviso? Or is that tantamount to expending, uh, a school expending public dollars just by simply making a request of council to provide the masks?
That's a good question. Um, I would suggest that we not have language that allows a school to, uh, request masks, that we can, any language be that, uh, the public can come get masks at any time and that we have those available.
Thank you.
Good suggestion.
Sales. And you recognize? I'm not, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Attorney McLean, how long is this ordinance?
It would stay in effect for sixty days. It expires on the.
No, no, I'm sorry, how many pages is this ordinance?
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, I got seven.
All right, so we got a seven-page ordinance that we were given a one or two-minute summary on, not been seen by the public previously so that they could give us any review or comment. It was mentioned that we're patterning it after a twenty-twenty ordinance, I'm sure well over a year old so that anybody that was not here previously in Richland County has any idea what that twenty-twenty ordinance stated, if in fact, people that are currently here from then have any idea, remember what it said. And now we're talking about a new part put in because of Columbia putting something in, we've added new parts also. Seems to me it would be prudent that we had a document in front of us in this agenda that not only we council members could review, I know you're going to say we sent it to you via email, but the public could review and it could be a matter of the record. An email is not a matter of this record and I think this is a terrible way to get an ordinance, uh, in place without specifics being shown publicly, unless I'm missing something. However, based on that comment, I would make a motion that we defer this to next week's meeting so we can see all these details.
Second. Motion moving properly second for a deferral, that's not debatable, um, um, I'll ask Ms. Onkin, call the role for the motion for deferral.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Horacio.
No.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
No.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Motion fails.
Eric, Chairman Antony, any additional questions on motion regarding, um.
Chair.
Miss, 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 you recognize?
I move for approval with the, um, changes by Mr. O-.
Second, second.
After second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Brock, you recognize?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer forward a, uh, friendly amendment to said, uh, motion such that under excluded parties, those who are vaccinated and willing to provide proof of it are excluded.
That gave Mr. Walker, I'm sorry, what, um, where, where are you referring to?
I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me but I think Ms. McLean knows what I'm going for, under excluded parties or entities, those who are vaccinated and are willing to provide proof of said vaccination would be excluded from the mask ordinance.
Application, so, so then, um, someone who's vaccinated would have to, will not have to wear masks, what you're saying?
Correct, if excluded from the ordinance, correct.
Any, any discussion, um, uh, is, is there second to that?
Make of the motion, we have to accept. Technically, right? All right, then I'd offer a substitute motion with the language I just proposed.
Second now.
That's the motion, moving properly second, any discussion, substitute motion, um.
Yeah, uh, Councilman Walker, could we, uh, also add in there, uh, individuals who have had COVID and would have natural immunity?
I'm last, I was speaking to the.
Make of the motion, Mr.
Substitute motion, uh.
Yes. That's who I spoke to.
That was a question to Ms. Walker, right?
Okay. Uh, for the sake of actually having a chance of getting something through here, I would say no.
Okay.
Very small chance, no.
I said, my first thing kind of in my mind is, is, is recognizing that, um, um, those of us who've been vaccinated can still, um, expose someone else and get the virus and also too, I'm a little concerned about how we manage that, um, uh, in terms of, um, vaccinated. Further discussion?
Make of the motion, can I respond to your question? So, one, from a management perspective, I would, I would suggest that the, uh, management associated with the original ordinance language is as difficult as any management project I've ever seen, especially when you start talking about citations against my twelve-year-old kid who I can't even control, so good luck with that. Uh, and then secondly, as it pertains to, um, still being a carrier, is that what you said, was that the second point that was made?
Someone who's vaccinated but still maybe, if you're not wearing a mask, uh, that mean you can't expose someone else.
Right, but statistically, which is what we've claimed that we want to follow, as a vaccinated person, the risk is reduced, I think as I was looking at some of the Lexington Medical Center statistics today, the death rate amongst vaccinated personnel is one tenth of the vaccinated, therefore statistically speaking, uh, if people are following said statistics, it's prudent based on data to get said vaccine and why punish those of us who have gone out and done as we've been asked, mandate something upon us, impress upon us a taxation that really should be borne by those who are refusing the treatment? That would be my response as a.
I wasn't, perhaps with another death, I was talking, you know, of vaccinated individuals, I was referring to, you know, the per- the percentage that could possibly be exposed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I really would like to encourage this body to take a step back and to be, um, think about the children that we have in our community. I serve children every day, every day since the first day of school, we have had children.
We have had children going home because they are testing positive for COVID and/or coming in contact with someone who has. So, as we talk about taking away and saying mask, no mask for individuals who are vaccinated, yes, we can still get COVID for those of us who have been vaccinated and very easily spread it to unvaccinated people, such as our children who are under the age of 12, who, who don't have the option to have this, to have this vaccine. So, as we look forward in making, you know, this ordinance and putting something in place, I really want us to think about our children. This is about our children. I don't want to wear masks. I go in and out of schools every day, but I'm double masked. Why? Because I'm concerned about the children that I was going to come in contact with. I'm concerned about the individuals who have made, have the choice to get the vaccine and still don't, but yet I wear a mask, not for me, but for those other people. So, I really want us to take this very seriously. I know this is our right. I know we want to skate on the edge of doing what is right. And so, as we think about what's doing what is right, let's think about the young people. Let's think about our children. Thank you.
And also too, we need to insert in the ordinance, the actual effective date. Because I don't think we, that we have not inserted that, whether that's going to be effective immediately or a certain date. So, we certainly need to incorporate that into the ordinance, which is on the second to last page of the ordinance.
The effective date is tomorrow and we need the time. I don't have the calendar for the 61 days, 60 days.
We have a time, it's six eight.
The 15th.
I'm saying that to the maker of the motion.
As maker of substitute motion, I'll accept tomorrow at 6:00 AM.
And that's, that's a substitute motion that we're referring to now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If we could, please restate the substitute motion.
Walker, can you do that so I won't mess it up?
Assuming I won't. So, the intent of the substitute motion and the substitute motion is to adopt the ordinance as presented, adding in under excluded parties, vaccinated individuals who are willing to provide proof of said vaccination to the proper enforcement authority. Is that clear enough, Ms. McLean, to satisfy the intent?
Thank you, yes. Further discussion. If it's a substitute motion. I, I'll carry, we'll carry the substitute motion. I'll ask Ms. Ollie to call the role for the substitute motion.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Raciyo. Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
No.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Motion fails.
I bring this back to the original motion.
Ms. Only?
I'll ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you call me and I missed it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to vote no.
Yes, ma'am.
I bring back the original motion and I'll ask the maker of the motion to please insert the effective date.
The effective date will be September the 15th.
Further discussion. There'll be a nine now. I'll ask Ms. Ollie to call the role for the original motion.
Malinowski.
No.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Raciyo. Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Here I move for re.
Second.
Upper second for reconsideration for item eighteen. Only can you call the role for the motion reconsideration.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston.
No.
Raciyo.
No.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
No.
Overture Walker.
No.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Motion fails.
Move to adjourn.
Negative session, there's no exception items in motion here.
Yes, sir.
Motion, there's a motion to adjourn. This is second.
Second.
Moving proper second for adjourn, Ms. Ollie can call the motion for the motion to adjourn.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Raciyo.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Overture Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Motion passes.